Hello, everyone. Welcome. It is 6:02, so I'll call this meeting of council to order. Welcome to everyone who is watching us online, not our usual night, but as is tradition, we livestream and put on YouTube our meeting where we take a last look at the budget. And as always, you can see this on TEL-IL for the next seven days or so. So we'll get started with a roll call of councillors. Over to the CAO.
Thank you, Madam Chair. District One, Councillor Sean Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. District Two, Warden Landry.
Present.
Thank you. District Three, Councillor Marshawn.
Present.
District Four, Councillor Mombriquet.
Present.
Thank you. And District Five, Deputy Warden Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. And I didn't say thank you to Councillor Marshawn. Just got caught up in the moment.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. You have the motion in front of you that was circulated and was available online. You have the motion, sorry, the agenda in front of you. It was circulated last week, posted online. Are there any errors or omissions or additions to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda circulated? Sorry, need a motion. Yes, sorry. Moved by Deputy Warden Sampson. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Sampson. Any discussion on that? Just a note, I'll say it now at this point in the juncture. What we have in front of us is the 2025 budget, but just for the sake of clarity, you'll see there are many, many, many grant requests. They are the ones that have been deferred at our April meeting, our May meeting, and our June meeting. So we were, we are all caught up as of this list as of yesterday sometime. So hearing no other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. So first item on your agenda, item number four, is the budget, 2025-2026 budget. So we have three items under here. The five-year capital investment plan, area rates, and the final budget for the year ending March 31, 2026. So much discussion went into this over a series of several meetings. There are very specific motions required, and so I will read them out because they are quite specific. Ask for a mover and a seconder. And then at each juncture, we can have debate, once we have a motion, to debate. So the first item, under item A, 4A, I'm looking for a motion, so this is regarding the five-year capital investment plan. I'm looking for a motion, the council approved the five-year capital investment plan for the municipality of the County of Richmond for the fiscal year ending March 31, 2026. I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Sampson. Have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councillor Mombriquet. Thank you. So is there any discussion on that Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so the next item is the area rates. So we have another lengthy motions, which I'll read and ask for a mover and a seconder. Looking for a motion that council accept the recommendation of the Director of Finance and that the following area rates be approved. St. Peter's Fire Department, 11 cents. West Bay Road Fire Department, 15 cents. Lardois Fire Department, 16 cents. Grand River Fire Department, 15 cents. Lockloman Fire Department, 15 cents. Lewesdale Fire Department, 10 cents. Framboy's Forshu Fire Department, 15 cents. Isle Madame Fire Department, 11 cents. District 10 Fire Department, 13 cents. The former District Two Community Rate, 4 cents. Former District Four Community Rate, 1 cent. And the St. Peter's Village Commission, collect whatever rate they establish conditional on them providing their rate to the municipality by July 31, 2025. Can I have a mover for that? Moved by Councillor Sampson. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Warden Sampson. Any discussion on that? Yes?
I was wondering if you'd make an amendment that, I think, per the budget discussions, that we had a 5-cent rate for Point Pepper?
So you're making a motion?
Well, I guess an amendment to the, to add that, if that's agreeable. I was under the impression that's where we're going with it. We just didn't know exactly what the revenue raised from it would be. And you haven't heard back yet as to what that would be, right?
So we have a motion on the floor? So if you would like to make a motion for that amendment, by all means. So the amendment is to add to this 5 cents for...
Point Pepper area.
Point Pepper area. Yep, okay, good. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by...
I'll second it, but I just...
Sorry, are you seconding it?
I'm seconding it, yeah, for discussion.
So there's a second... There's a seconder to the motion to amend. Discussion on the motion to amend. Councillor Marshawn, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I just want to ask the mover, is this is going to be the same as all other rates per hundred of assessment?
Yeah, and I guess maybe ask the CAO this time if we are required to do this, or if I'm, like, I don't want to be out of line on this or anything. I just further our discussions that day. I thought that's where we had landed. We just didn't know what the revenue would be from it.
But I also didn't want to have a situation where we improve the budget and it seems like we throw this in as a surprise afterwards, you know? Yeah.
And that was our thought, was we were given the task to go away and check with the folks at PVSC on what a proposed number would look like for the area. The levy can be introduced at any time in the year. There is a process for notifying people that the levy is coming because it's not a pre-existing levy. So there was no way we'd be ready for budget time at this time. So we have the call into PVSC. We have not heard back from them yet because we wanted to see what the assessment was, to see what the number should be, so that we weren't gaining more money than was required to pay for the fire services that we're already paying for in that area.
Councillor Mombriquet? Apologies.
Thank you, Warden. And yeah, so I just wanted to maybe echo a little bit of what Troy was saying. Like, I know Deputy Warden, you know, we talked about this in the last budget meeting, and I agree with your intent, but I wouldn't be prepared to support a motion to amend, to add that one in yet until we get that info back from council. But not to say that I think it's a bad idea. I just wanted to clarify my position on it. I just want to see that information before we kind of make a move. That would be my position.
Yeah, and I'm also fine to withdraw it if that's, like, if that was the intention that during the year that could be introduced. I just, I didn't want to leave this as if we weren't sort of, as if we're not notifying people of this, or not making it known that that was our intention going forward. So yeah, I'm fine with withdrawing that if we're clear that it can be added throughout the year and that that is the intention of council from what I understood. Not necessarily to say that exact number, but at some point. Yeah, okay.
Great. So we'll withdraw that amendment with permission from the mover and seconder? Seconder? Yes?
No.
Sorry?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I guess.
Yep. Yep. So the idea is that we, we are waiting for some information. We are not required to do it at this moment, and so to be able to wait for the information and then sort of have the good communications that go with it. And it is within our purview to do that at any point in the year. Councillor Marshawn?
But I guess the comment is, the worry of getting more than what we are being charged by Port Hoxbury. I don't think that should be our concern with it. It's just to be fair to all the residents of Richmond. I mean, we could put the normal rate for the district on the residents anyway, with a different rate for the industry.
If we want to get...
Sorry.
Sorry.
If we want to get the amount for fire protection. So, I mean, I'm okay with withdrawing it now, but I think we need to look at it sooner than later when our Director of Finance gets information. I think we need to have the discussion soon as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think what, what deferring this to another meeting means that we will have a more fulsome discussion because we will have more information at that point. So, go ahead.
The only other thing I'm thinking of is the fall tax bills go out, what, September 1st, right? So depending on whether or not, we could, I guess we could have a special virtual meeting to decide this. If we could, if we could just agree that we'll, we'll try and deal with it before then?
That's our intention.
Awesome. No, thank you very much.
Yeah, fair, good point, because we typically don't meet in time to meet that first mail out. So that, that ties us to a timeframe. Great. So I won't go into great detail, but I will remind us that our motion on the floor is to accept the recommendations of finance that include the marketing, sorry, the fire levies, the district, former District Two and Four Community Rate, and the St. Peter's Village Commission to be determined. So that's the motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion The item C is significant in terms of the motion it requires. So what I'm looking for is the following motion. That municipal council give approval to the municipal estimates of revenues and expenditures for the year ending March 31, 2026, in the amount of $17,469,578. And further move that whereas pursuant to the municipal act, the municipal council of the municipal, municipality of Richmond estimates that sums amounting to $11,22,689 are required for the lawful purpose of the said municipality for the year ending March 31, 2026, after crediting the probable revenue from all sources other than rates for the said year and making due allowance for the abatement and losses which may occur in the collection of taxes and for taxes for the said year which may not be collected or collectible. Therefore resolved, that Richmond County hereby authorizes the levying and collection of a residential rate of 85 cents on $100, on each $100 of assessed value of residential property assessed on the assessment roll, and a commercial rate of $2.15, which rates said council deemed sufficient to raise sums required to defray the expenditures of said municipality for this year, and any deficit from the previous preceding years. And be it further resolved, that Richmond County hereby imposes an additional percentage charge of 18% per annum on all rates and taxes remaining unpaid. And be it further resolved, that Richmond County hereby fixes the 30th day of September, 2025, as the day on which the tax collector or treasurer may proceed to issue warrants for the collection of all rates and taxes then unpaid. Can I have a motion to that effect? Moved by Deputy Warden Sampson. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Sampson. Any discussion on that motion? It's like a standoff. Go ahead.
I was going to say it was for the year, March 31, 2026, not 2021-26.
Did I say 2021?
It's going to be a long...
I hope not to be sitting here at that point.
In the, in the motion. Yeah. It was, in fairness, it was a long thing. Any other discussion on that? Certainly, you know, much to be said for staff, many thanks to staff, who worked tirelessly to find opportunities to make sure that the tax rate remained the same, both residential and commercial. So the process was, was certainly an arduous one, and difficult decisions were made, and each of the directors worked really hard to practice sound fiscal management and make some difficult decisions. So we're very grateful for the, the work that went into that. Many else?
Say we appreciate that on behalf of the staff.
Great. Yes. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Okay. Any other, okay, anything else? No. So the motion passes with four yeses, one nays, which we now record as per change in our council procedural policy. So moving along to the last item on the agenda, but it's a doozy. You know when you've got sections up to P, you know you're going for it. So just a little bit of information for folks. As I mentioned earlier, because the budget, so there are up to P level, number of grant requests. The reason there are so many is because they come in every month, but until the budget passes, we're not in a position to grant, to make decisions about grant requests until the budget tells us after its passing how many dollars we have to work with. So there are, much as was the case last year, $5,000 in each of our district funds, and we have a total of $37,500 for district funds for both Tier One and Tier Two. So all together, we have $37,500 and $25,000, for a total of $62,500, which we are very happy to be able to contribute to community groups through this grant process. The total of requests tonight is close to 47,000, which is a sizable amount of that 62.5. So recognizing that, there may be some difficult conversations. It certainly does not suggest that we do not value the work that each of these community groups does, but we will dive in. I will remind folks who are listening at home that there is a new grants policy. It includes reference to two kinds of applications for the most part, Tier One and Tier Two. Tier One is described as for smaller financial requests with local impact, and Tier Two are for larger financial requests that benefit the broader community. There are some water development, but there are none in the, this set of asks. The limit for an organization to apply is $1,000 for Tier One. That can be made up of more than one application, though, and the limit for any community group for larger projects is 7,500. So we will go through these and get through as many of these as we can before nine o'clock tonight and see how far we go. I will say there is a commitment from council to work as diligently as we can to get through these, recognizing that there are some quotes in here which may or may not be accepted, be honored after the end of September, when we would typically get back to this kind of work. So the first, A, the Rural Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia. And I would point out that there are two in your package that actually are on forms that we used prior to March 31. So they came in after, kind of after the bell, but did use the previous forms. So there are two, the first two. So this one is the Rural Communities Foundation, and we actually had a presentation from them last night. There are, sorry, at the Committee of the Whole on Tuesday. Interestingly, there was a little bit of information that wasn't shared with us, in that one of the schools is actually a Kullbo poor, and 100% of municipal contributions in a community stay within that community. So I'll throw it out for discussion.
Should we make a motion on second or...
Yes, I guess, yeah, we, we kind of need a dollar amount in the motion, I think. So if somebody wants to...
I'd make a motion for the Rural Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia grant application, Tier Two, to the tune of $3,500. And the reason I was picking that number was I believe that's what he said. It was per school generally, so that we could start there, maybe the first year.
And you're proposing that that come out of district... Sorry, regional funds?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Councillor Sampson. Okay. So the commitment in this is that whatever we give goes to, goes to, remains in Richmond County. It's, it would be up to schools to submit applications. So if no other school in Richmond, it's possible that the existing school would get 7,000, but if another school, then that would be an opportunity. And it might be nice for each of us to, or actually, I'll take it upon myself to make sure that the other schools in the community know about this and apply. So they may not all get the money, but I'll make sure that they are aware. So we have a motion and a seconder. Any other discussion on that?
Warden, just a quick question. I'm just wondering, like, is there other, is there an opportunity to kind of, like, ensure some sort of equitable, you know, access to best funding between the schools, like, based on the population of the school? Do you know what I mean? Like, as I'm thinking about, you know, Richmond Academy and now Lakeview High School, and all, you know what I mean? Like, all of the schools where this might be able to apply. I'm just wondering if there's some way we can ensure some equity. But I don't know if that's possible.
I really don't, and, and I can think of many ways it could play out. Let's suppose that we contribute 3,500, and they say, okay, well, that's 7,000 we're going to give, you know, 3,500 each to the two schools, or we're going to give, take some of the money from one and make sure, so. I, I don't, I don't really know, and I, I don't know the answer to that. We could defer this one and get some information, but we did have him here to speak with us, so.
I don't think we had the information that only one of our schools was participating, though. That's the only thing that's giving me cause, I guess.
Yeah, there were only 20, I thought 20, I thought he said 26, but it looks like maybe 36. But it was, I'm surprised we even have one, to be honest.
Yeah.
Okay, so hearing no other discussion. We have a motion on the floor for 3,500 for raising the, sorry, the Rural Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia. Last call for discussion on that. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? So we have two nays. If we can see those recorded, Councillor, yeah, Councillor Marshawn and Councillor Mombriquet.
Sorry, who was the second nay?
Councillor Marshawn?
No, I think just Councillor Marshawn. I think she was a yea.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, your, your hand, sorry, your hand went up late. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Maybe say yes, just, yeah, sorry. Say yes for me now, because I'll, sorry about that.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we have B. This is again, one that came in just under the wire before April 1. So we have Raising the Villages Cooperative. The ask for this is 3,500.
3,000.
Sorry, 3,000. Yeah. So I, I made note for myself on their email correspondence that we continue to thank Richmond County throughout 2425, following the last worded in 23. We do this as we have received Richmond County funding differently from other funders. It is, seems to be retrospective as opposed, so I'm not, I'm not sure if that, I'm not, I really didn't understand that, to be honest. It does speak about things they've done in the past.
Oh, I may have misunderstood, sorry. I could, I may have misunderstood. I just thought they meant they were thanking people who had donated previously. Maybe I misread that. I'm not sure.
We have received Richmond County funding differently from other funders. It is retrospective funding for work that has already been completed.
Correct.
So I'll, I'll throw it out if somebody would like to make a motion, or if not, we'll...
So, Warden, I, like, I'm a big supporter of this organization, like, conceptually. I think they do, I think they're, you know, trying to do some really great work. I, I do want to note that they have financial assistance listed, you know, from Victoria County, from the town of Port Hoxbury. I don't see Inverness County in their application, if I'm missing it. But like, I do, I feel it's, it's quite a large ask. But like, I guess, I would like to see us kind of supported in some way, shape or form, but I'm not, I'm not convinced that $3,000 is the level of, of financial support that we would want to contribute at this point.
Yeah, I, I feel like this is a much more generic ask than we typically see in this process.
It feels very operational in nature.
Yeah.
Sounds more like a funding contribution.
Could we potentially ask, could we potentially ask them to come back with sort of a specific project in, in mind?
Yeah, I think that that's more in line with what we, we do here, and it would give us a sense of whether it was happening in Richmond, or give us some idea of, of the touch points on that. So I'm, I'm hearing that we will move along, direct staff to maybe reach out, but without a motion on this one. Yep, okay.
We'll reach out to Jim.
Sure. 3,000, so I'm sorry, Appendix, gosh, C. Item C, which is the Whiteside Church Preservation Society. So this request is for 3,000. And I do want to just maybe clarify something in this application. The very end of their, the very last paragraph on page one, "Thank you in advance for considering and approving our request for $3,000, which is the difference in the error with the previous grant application approval of $5,000." Just to be clear, that wasn't an error, in my opinion. We, at the time, had a policy that only allowed district funds to be allotted to the, to groups that fell under certain criteria. So at the time, that was all they were permitted. We have since changed the rules, so they are free to apply under this new set of rules. But I do feel like that's but I do feel like that just needs clarification. And I will say that, so the work is going to continue on this front. So, I'll ask for a motion if anyone's so inclined. Counselor Marshon, do you...
Just want to ask a question. Can you state where the policy was that churches only came out of district funds in the previous grant?
It was practice that had been established by previous council.
You said it was a policy.
It wasn't a policy, it was practice.
Yes. So, but the St. Peter's Lock Lomond, they got money the year before, they're the same kind of institution as the Catholic churches who were rejected over the years. This group applied properly and should have been able to get all the money, but because of a practice, they were denied all the money, and it came through district funds. So they're applying now, whether it's, they had a previous grant, they're applying just like everyone else, so.
They're applying.
I don't think, and I think they fall in the criteria, or they're falling in the grant application, the policy that we have now, they're not, not following any of the rules this time. So are you suggesting that...
Sorry, cut you off there, I thought you finished.
Are you suggesting that they only get money under district funds?
No.
Okay.
Not at all. I'm suggesting that the words "in error" are not fair, are not an accurate portrayal of what happened before. So just correcting that, they are free to apply right now. So they are applying now, under the current rules, and we will actually get to the St. Peter's United Church situation, a little bit further down. But, yeah, so, looking for anyone who's prepared to make a motion regarding the request from Whiteside Church Preservation Society, their ask is $3,000.
I'll make that motion.
$3,000?
$3,000.
Okay, you have a second, or? Sorry, I should have clarified this each time, but maybe I will ask more specifically. We should, when we make these motions, clarify if they are from district funds or regional funds. So Counselor Marshon, I'll ask you to clarify your motion.
Tier Two, they're applying under Tier Two.
They're applying under Tier Two?
Yes, yeah.
But if you're saying...
We would, if your motion is for $3,000, what dollar amount from district and what dollar amount from regional?
Oh, okay, you want me to divide it that way?
Yeah, I guess we're all, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to take $1,000 out of the district funds, and $2,000 out of the regional funds, yeah, okay.
So that is a motion to provide $3,000, with $1,000 coming from District Three funds, and $2,000 coming from the regional fund. Any takers on that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Mumberkett. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Deputy Warden?
Yeah, my concern with this, it's not, you know, anything to do with the work going on itself, but it's the same thing as what we're going to run into in another one later on. We're basically having two applications for one project, that's my issue with it. And I understand that we're changing policy, and fair enough, but I don't want to see in the future where a group applies for money, maybe the project doesn't start, and the fiscal year changes and applies for more, because we've kind of got that happening twice tonight. So, I understand that some in the past didn't get what would have been, you know, nicer to see, and that's why we tried to correct this changing policy, and I hope we can do that going forward, but just thinking, we've had lots of examples in the past where they didn't get everything they wanted based on how the policy was laid out, and so I wouldn't be in support of this for that reason.
Okay, anybody else need comments? I will make note that...
The total of last year and this year is still $5,000, so I'm, I would be particularly mindful if they came up again and asked for enough to get them $7,500, that kind of thing. So I appreciate your comments, but I don't share the concern there. Anybody else have any? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, just a reminder to give this organization $3,000, which is $1,000 from District Three, and $2,000 from regional funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Deputy Warden Sampson. Okay, motion carried. All right. And this is going to be a long night, folks, so I am going to encourage you to keep track of your own district funds, to make sure that you're mindful of that. So we have the River Bourgeois Mariners Society, this one is Item D on your grant request, they are applying for $1,000 for, which is the maximum amount allowed under Tier One, for, to assist with the lucky boat, or annual boat, luck of the draw run.
So, Ward, I have a question on this one, maybe?
For sure.
Or I would make a motion, if that's okay.
Yes, yeah, I think we're going to need to do that, yeah.
I talked to you, the CAO there, Troy, very briefly about this the other night when I was there. The, so, we were having a conversation about sponsorships. Essentially, this is, this is a sponsorship request. We had always treated it as a grant application in the past because we had a sponsorship kind of piece in there, or category of some sort, but then, you know, we also spoke the other night about, you know, do these types of things even need to come to council? Should this be a grant application, or should it be just out of our advertising and promotions budget that we just approved? And we don't really have any policy around what that amount is, that, you know, that staff would approve as a sponsorship out of advertising and promotions versus what would come through a grant program, but I, I'm feeling like this is such a straightforward one, it's kind of glaring, I guess, as a bit of being different from the others, right? So, I don't know, Troy, if you wanted to, if you have any thoughts on that, you and I just very, spoke very, very briefly about it.
Yeah, not a whole lot yet on this one, because a lot of the grants that you do get asked for are to help them with their fundraisers and materials. The sponsorship is more like when we buy a banner in a newspaper to support, like, Grad Week, or MAD, or one of those things. So this is where we need to have that further conversation, and I fully get it, that this is much cleaner than, like, building any construction and stuff like that, where we see a lot of our grant money go. And I would, I do see it as advertising and seeing the county supporting these things. But, yeah, we need to make that delineation between what's a sponsorship and what's a grant, and clean that up with our new grant policy, and assign the funds appropriately. Hopefully, we'll have that in place for next year, but for this year, I think we're stuck with it in the grant application, they took the time to fill out the grant application, I think we should deal with it here.
Yeah, and also, I mean, you know, they're talking about portable toilets and dock installation removal, which is, which is, you know, the stuff of grants, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, then I'll be prepared to make a motion, then. Not for the full amount, though, I would make a motion that we support the River Bourgeois Mariners Grant Application in the amount of $750, with $500 coming from District Four Funds, and $250 coming from, from the regional funds.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to that effect, $750 with $500 of that coming from District Four Funds. You have a second, or?
I'll second that.
So we have a mover and a second, or? Do we have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. E, so I'm just going to make note, I don't want to kind of start moving agenda items around, but I do want to remind people that there are two, so E and G are both from the Kitchen Rackets Organization. So we can, we can do them in order, nothing wrong with that, but just to be mindful that we're doing E, and then we're doing Jamboree's Island, and immediately after that, there's another Kitchen Rackets. So, so this one is from Kitchen Rackets Organization, as is Item G, and, but they are actually for two different things. So the one we're looking at under Item E is a funding request for Celtic Colors Workshop and Jam Sessions by Kitchen Rackets. That request is for $800, and they've applied for that under the Tier Two application form. So, open to discussion on any of that? Counselor Mumberkett?
I have a question on this one.
Yeah.
So the grant, so I'm assuming they did Tier Two because they got two applications this evening?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right.
But, but I guess my question is, they have Tier Two because if they went Tier One, they would exceed the amount. But I, I thought, like, I don't think that, so, I actually questioned whether this fits into a Tier One or Tier Two application, whether it, whether it is something that is, if you look at the policy broader, particularly the second one, but, anyway.
This one, my questions are on the second, right?
Yeah. Yes, yes, right, exactly, this one is a little bit broader, and yet, if they did this as Tier Two, because it is a Celtic Colors event, and it is broader in scope, and the other one was a Tier One, they actually are still within limits, because they can get, they can apply for each, and neither would be over, but...
So is, so are we feeling like they're in the right spot, in the right tier? Then it's like, I'm assuming they would have got direction from staff as to how to fly on this one, I think.
Yeah, I think they can apply as they see fit.
Fit, though, they don't need permission from staff, so they, yeah, they don't need permission to apply for one or the other, they can, they can choose to. Yeah, Council, sorry, Counselor Marshon?
Thank you, Ward. They're getting money from, from the festival events on DCB as well.
So you're talking about the one we're on now, they're getting money from...
Yeah, DCBA.
Sure, yeah, yeah, let's, so we keep...
These sort of moving along, because if there's no motion, then there's no reason. But if there's no motion, we wouldn't need to, just like the last one. So, does, does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to support the Kitchen Rabbit Celtic Colors Grant Application in the amount of $800, with $400 coming from District Four and $400 from Regional. Also, open to amendments.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for $800, and to be fair, they are two separate applications, so we can, we may want to have a little more conversation on the, on the next one. This one relates to Celtic Colors, and the ask is 800, and Counselor Mumberkett has offered 400 from District Four and 400 from Regional. We have motion, is there a second, or?
Yeah.
Sorry, oh, Deputy Warden, sorry, yeah. Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Oh.
Yes, we're okay. Sorry, Counselor Marshon, are, do you have any discussion on the matter?
No.
No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah. Are you a yes? Then you're a no?
No.
No, yeah, okay, so no with Counselor Marshon. Okay, so, Grant, we're on F?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, we are on the...
Roof of the Community.
Yes, so it's 239 pages, so we're, we're flipping between pages here. So, we have a, an application from the Jamboree's Island Organization to the tune of $7,500. The costs associated with that are $13,281. I'm just going to do one little math thing here before I throw it open to everybody. My math teacher would be...
Got to show your work.
Yeah.
Don't care if you have the right answer, if you don't know either, right?
Exactly.
Okay. So, so this organization is in my community, I'm not in a position to make a motion, but I would be open to hearing somebody else make a motion to cover half the cost of the renovations listed, which would be $6,640.50, with $1,000 of that coming out of District One Funds. So I'm, I'm open to beginning that, but I need a motion.
Can I make a...
It's not a motion, because I can't move, so if you'd like to make a motion that included some reference there.
So I'll make that motion, except I will take it out of District Two Funds, instead of District One.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, almost hit me, Lois. Good thing I just had some pop, eh? Good thing I had a drink of Pepsi.
So, so, so the motion that you are making, Counselor Sampson, is to provide $6,640.50 with $1,000 coming out of District Two Funds, and the rest, that would be $5,640.50 coming out of Regional Funds. So that's the motion from Counselor Sampson.
Save the numbers again? I'll second that.
Yeah, so seconded by Deputy Warden.
So, the...
I thought you said $5,000 of the district funds, I heard.
Sorry, so I, what I did, Counselor, was I took the total amount, $13,281, and divided that in two, being mindful that we are, we are not even into a third of the year, a fiscal year, and we would have exhausted our budget. So, looking at covering half of that...
I thought you said $5,000 of the district funds, I heard.
Well, he can, but I don't have that much to give, but, so it, the motion is for six, so that the half is $6,640.50 with $1,000 coming from District Two Funds, the remainder from Regional Funds. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that brings us to the, my calculator away, so this brings us to the second of the Kitchen Rackets Organization, and honestly, this is the one that I felt was a little, I lost him, oh, there he is, okay. This is the one that I felt was a little bit more of a Tier One application, because it was a little less broad in scope, so this one is for Traditional Music Jam Sessions at the Lion's Den. And this ask is for $800. So I will turn that over to anyone who...
Yeah, so I'm prepared to make a motion on this, but I, and I do kind of agree with your, your live thought there, Ward. But at this stage of the game, just given where, given the vast amounts of money that we're putting out, and then there's a whole year to come.
Yeah.
What I'd like to do is make a motion that, to support the Kitchen Rackets Jam Sessions Grant Application to the tune of $200, fully coming from District Four Funds.
Can't go wrong. Do we have a second, or?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're on to H, and this is the St. Peter's Grand River Lock Lomond Pastoral And this is, this one is, so, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but I'm going to take the word of it from this document, because I know we had much discussion about it. So it says the funding would top up the 2425 grant of $1,520, which I believe, which would have come exclusively from District Four Funds. And at the time, we were, and again, correcting myself from earlier, it wasn't that our policy was that we didn't give to groups that were, had property owned by churches, it was that the practice had been that that would only come from district funds. This one was interesting, because I actually did a fairly exhaustive search of property online, and because in their balance sheet, like, I had tried to do some due diligence before the meeting, and in the balance sheet, it listed the buildings as assets, but actually, they do own, and have a copy of the deed, so the... they do own, and have a copy of the deed, so, the trustees of the St. Peter's United Church, so it's actually the trustees that own the building that the, and there is a parcel, a little triangular parcel, that is owned by the United Church, but that's not at all what was involved in the covering of this request. So, where the two buildings are owned by a group, it's not owned by the church. So, what happened then is, because we were unclear about whether or not they would have been eligible for the full 5,000, Counselor Mumberkett had, I believe that was the last of her money, $1,520, but at the time, even taking into account, it was not like the church, any other church, those buildings belonged to the trustees, they belonged to a community group, and I actually have that information, if you'd like to see it. So, that being said, they are working on a, kind of a, an exhaustive project that involves many parts, and the total amount, they're still short, even if they got this amount, I think they're short thousands of dollars, but they are looking to accumulate some of that. So, that's sort of where we are, and open to motion on this building request.
So, Ward, now, I'm prepared to make a motion, at least to get us through discussion...
Yep.
As well, so, the motion I would like to make is to support the St. Peter's Grand River Lock Loman Pastoral Charge Grant Application in the full amount requested, 5,980, with 1,000 coming from District Four and 4,980 coming from Regional Funds.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a seconder? I'm going to make sure we understand. So, the motion that's being made is to provide the full amount, which together with the 1520 from last year would bring them to the 7,500, 1,000 of that would, under this motion, come from District Four, with the remaining coming from the Regional Funds. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Marshon, did I hear that right? Okay, so we have some discussion on that motion.
So, yeah, I guess I fall the same way as I do with the, the previous one, where I feel like it's, it's, you know, two grants under the same project. The only other thing I'd note here is, the 5980 is not, the remainder of what they're asking to max out at 7,500 doesn't coincide with what they asked for in March. In March, they were asking for 5,000, so that what they didn't receive then was 3,480, but they've opted, in this case, just so everyone's aware.
So, Ward, now, just a couple comments on this, so, it's, it's extremely, it's extremely good leveraging, they're valuing the project, I think, at 52,000, so, you know, we're getting lots of bang for our buck there, so that's why I put the motion forward in the form that I did. The other thing I wanted to note is, some of the work that they're talking about is centered around accessibility, which has been a priority for our county, they're also talking about some upgrades to the building that would include, like, a green room, and, you know, being able to separate performance from audience, that type of thing, and I, and I know that that may, you know, that may sound like an unnecessary piece, but we do not have a facility like that in the eastern, the eastern end of the county, you know, the halls that we have are not configured in that way, and it has presented some complications, I guess, like, it's a complication right now for when we host Celtic colors festivals, even at the Lions Hall these days, so, I just wanted to note that, because I thought it was an important piece in terms of supporting the arts sector in our region as well, and, yeah, and just thank you for noting that this is, you know, that the buildings being, the building being on the balance sheet and, and the ownership does rest securely with a community group, and not, not the United Church, and that they are planning to, you're seeing that stakeholder equity being reflected in the, in the financing for the project as well, they're deploying, they're on money, and so, I'll, I'll just leave my comments there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that, in addition to none of the halls currently having that, the school doesn't have it either at East Richmond, which is, which is not typical, so, really, and it was sort of flagged in the multi-use facility... Report, yeah, the feasibility study. So, yeah, and, and I appreciate your comments about how it exceeds the 5,000, but they didn't ask for 7,500 either, they, they sort of recognized that the previous amount plus this amount got them together to the current amount, so, in fairness, you know, good on them for not asking for the 7,500. Counselor Marshon?
Maybe Counselor Mumberkett knows, there's an amount of $18,000, and they have TBD, did I miss something of where that is?
I thought they were still looking. TBD, is that...
Yeah, do we know where that's potentially coming from?
What did I see here? I saw that.
Because if they don't get...
No, go ahead, I...
If they don't get that, are they not proceeding?
Well, that's, that's a great question, Counselor Marshon, I know in the past, what we've done is we've made these, excuse me, made these contributions contingent upon, you know, then receiving enough financing to proceed with the project, so, it's hard to say with the crystal ball, you know, whether or not they'll be successful. So, so I would be open to an amendment to adding, you know, contingent upon financing being received.
However, just, we're already, oh, is that seconded?
It already was seconded by...
Were you making an amendment, Counselor Mumberkett?
Contingent.
Oh, that...
No, I, I wasn't...
You were just, you were just speculating, yeah.
I mean, I don't want to make an amendment, but if someone is suggesting that, I don't oppose, you know...
Right, so, I, I guess, my, my... Yeah, my, my thinking there is that we already don't pay out unless it's done, so, it, it think them would be kind of moot, right? We wouldn't give them any, we wouldn't give them this money if they couldn't start the project, actually finish the project. At best, we might give them 50% if they got going and were underway, so I'm, I'm less worried about that. Okay, so, we have a mover and a seconder?
You do.
And somebody left? So, we have four people in the room, there we go, no, yeah, okay. Hi, okay, so, we're back to the motion, which is, I've lost my place, the mount requested here with 1,000 from District Four funds. So, hearing no other debate on that topic, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, yes, those opposed? Great, so, we have one a recorded, perfect, moving along, H. Okay, we're on I. Okay. We have a grant request from the Richmond Artists Alliance Association, and they are asking for $1,000, and this one is, it is a tier-one, they, they are asking for money to pay for display materials, which includes stands, racks, easels, and promotional materials to create a professional-looking display for an event at the Yacht Club in Discus. I, I, I don't see this as a District Two issue, it just seems like that's where they're doing their work, but, throw it out there if anybody is interested in...
Yep, I'll, I'll make a motion that we take 500 out of the District One fund and 500 out of the Regional Fund.
So, we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Sampson to give them $1,000, 500 from District One and 500 from the Regional Funds. Counselor Mumberkett, you have your hand up, is that to second, or was that about a question?
I just, I have a question.
Okay, so, is there a seconder to the motion, and we can come back to that if anybody...
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, so, Counselor Mumberkett has seconded the motion, 500 and 500, is there any discussion on that? Counselor Mumberkett, did you...
I just, like, just wanted to clarify, this is a, like, I think this is a county-wide kind of network that's being set up, if I'm not mistaken, is that, am I right?
I, I believe so, this is a group that we have spoken to, I don't know, I don't remember where we spoke to them, maybe Tellil?
You would have done it, wanting to revisit some gender, because Lock...
Yes, that's where it was, yes, 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 yes. Yeah, right, I knew that I have, I've heard the... Right, so, they are in fact a, an organization that represents folks across the, across the county, yeah, and as I mentioned, the, the, the reference to Lennox Passage is just that they happen to be going to that event, but this would create something that I assume they could take to other venues as they went.
Well, that was, yeah, that was my question, was that, like, I don't know that I would support this if it was specifically just for this one...
Yeah, I, I...
But if these materials will help them be successful at markets, like, even outside of Richmond County, you know, is it safe for us to assume that?
At least within the county, they're attempting to build from scratch...
Right, yeah.
...an alliance that is going to be a place...
Right.
...for artists to show their works on, probably on Isle of Madame.
Yeah. So, I...
It's a long-term...
And move, yeah, so I...
My wife's involved, and I don't know much about it.
So, it sounds like they're, they're a fledgling organization, or not fledgling, maybe an, a, a beginning organization, and they are beginning them to see themselves on Isle of Madame and hope to expand beyond that. So, I, I, I do feel it's, it's a good chunk of money for a, a small group that is looking to, you know, it is a, it is a big initial investment, but we have a motion on the floor for 500 and 500, Counselor Marshon, do you have something?
Just want to clarify then, is it strictly Isle of Madame? Are all the directors here strictly from Isle of Madame?
Yeah, there's some from, I believe they are, but I, I couldn't...
Because I believe there's a lot of artisans in the St. Peter's area, River Bouchois area.
Yeah, I, I, there's a reason it's called the Richmond Artists Alliance, I mean, they call it the Isle of Madame Artists Alliance, because they intend to...
Exclusive, but I do believe...
Isle of Madame, specifically, so, is it only Isle of Madame, or is that where they're going to start from?
I believe that that's where they're starting, that's... Yes, and, and they've done some stuff on Tellil, too, that's the other place I think I've seen them, right? They, they were interviewed as part of Tellil as a, as an opportunity to expand, yeah. Counselor Marshon, you...
So, I'm still not clear, is it Isle of Madame, or are we assuming because of the name that it's going to be all of Richmond? Because I thought I heard Isle of Madame.
Yeah, I, I think it's fair to say that they intend to start building where they are and expanding beyond that, that was the impression I got from the Tellil piece that I watched, which I, I think is why Counselor Sampson sort of acknowledged that it is, it is starting out in, in, in this neck of the woods. Okay, so we have 500 from District One funds and $500 from the Regional Fund, which recognizes regional contributions potentially, so, any... Yeah, no, Counselor Marshon, Counselor Mumberkett seconded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't get that.
Okay, so, hearing no other debate on that, all those in favor signify by staying aye? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, moving on to the next one, which is J, this is from the Riverdale Community Services Society, and, just so I'm clear... Yeah, so, this is just a couple from, I'm just going to make sure I've got my, so, this is the River Bouchois Community Services, and they have, so they actually have three, and just a couple of, of things to clarify here, so, for, for folks who are kind of watching along, or this is our first council meeting where we discuss these, you can have multiple applications, so one group can apply multiple times, there's nothing wrong with that, so long as, if you are doing tier-one, then you do not exceed in all of your applications, you cannot exceed $1,000 in total, and you can also apply for tier-two, so long as all of your tier-two applications do not exceed $7,500. So, I do want everybody to just, it's, it's not a big amount, but just so we don't make a mistake here, on the letter from Kathleen Jeffrey, who is our Director of Finance, she says that the two total amounts actually exceed that $1,000, so, we would just have to correct that a little bit, so, they're asking for 396 and 608 for a total of just over, so, we may not give them the total amount, but just being mindful of that. So, the first one is for $608.31, they are looking to expand their community gardens, so this is a tier-one application, the cost of that to, for the lumber and screws to build more boxes and soil comes to a total of $608.31, and they're asking for that amount from the, from the group.
I'll make a motion to support them for 500, which 250 coming from the General and the 250 coming from District Three Funds.
Okay, so, you're asking for 500, 250 from District Three, and 250 from Regional, okay?
I'll second that.
Do we have any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none?
All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, so that takes care of our, yeah, that takes care of our over amount, so we don't have to worry about that anymore. So, the Riverdale Community Services Society now, in item K, has asked for $396.72, this is to purchase a barbecue for the hall for events, Canada Day, Wash or Toss tournaments, pub nights, et cetera. So, yeah, so there, we're, we're in good shape there in terms of not exceeding the limit.
Since this is a little different, I guess, I'll support, or I'll make a motion for four... Yeah, I'll make a motion then for 100 to come out of District Funds and the remaining to come out of the General Funds.
Okay, so, the...
Request here is for the, so, sorry, the motion on the floor is for the total amount to be provided to the Riverdale Community Services with $100 of that coming from District Three Funds. Any seconder on that? Okay, so...
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have Counselor Mumberkett seconding the motion. Discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I was all good with the first one, I think, you know, even just with food security and so on, and that, I guess, one could argue this was food security, but just for a barbecue, I feel like that's, if, you know, if Counselor Marshon wanted that to come entirely out of District Funds, I have no problem, but I'm not sure the Regional Funds are the place for funding a barbecue.
Yeah, and I, I, I also have some concern about funding all of it, also, I, I, I think these kinds of things probably are better suited to some District Funds and, you know, because there are some other times where we're going to see full dollar amounts for pieces of equipment, which is going to eat into this pretty quickly. Counselor Mumberkett?
Yeah, thank you, so, I seconded the motion so that we could get into the discussion, but I am wondering if we could make an amendment to, you know, if Counselor Marshon would be open to it, to do amendments for $200 to come from the District Three Funds, and that would be the full amount that we would support.
Yeah, I'll move that amendment.
Okay, so, we have a motion to amend to fund $300 from District Three Funds with no money, 200, sorry? Oh, 200, I didn't hear you properly, so is it 200, and that's it? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yep, so, $200 from District Three Funds... Yep, so $200 from District 3 Funds with no dollars from Richmond, from Regional Fund. And that was seconded by Counselor Marshon, so can we have a motion? I'm sorry, you...
Move by me.
I think she...
I had just suggested the amendment.
So are you okay with the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to second the amendment?
No, I'm going to make...
Oh, you're going to make the amendment? I thought she was making it. Okay, good.
I'll second it, how's that?
Then she'll second it. There we go, okay. So let's vote on the amendment, which changes it to 200 from District 3 Funds and zero from Regional. So all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Any other discussion on the motion now? So hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to put $200 from District 3 and $0 from Regional Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. Now we're going to the Oban Cemetery Society. So they are asking under Tier 1 for $1,000 for the purchase of topsoil, fill in graves, grass seed fertilizer, signage would also be great. Do we have anybody look to make a motion on that? Oh, Oban's in that district. Counselor Mumberkett?
And this is, this is, I guess, one of the, maybe a bit of a drawback on the Tier 1. They requested $1,000, but we, I don't, did I miss something? I don't really have a sense of the full cost of the project.
Right, well...
Like, I don't see that in here anymore.
You don't think it requires much information?
Right, I think the point of it was to sort of not require as much of District 1, and, you know, listen, lesson learned, but I, you know, I think we all know the cost of things, and they could easily spend $1,000 on these things. It doesn't really speak to how much of the project that covers, and would that be enough, or whatever, yeah.
It would still have to provide receipts, for sure.
Yeah, they do have to provide receipts, for sure. But I guess in terms of, you know, yeah.
Yeah, just in terms of our practice, intending not to fund things at 100%, right?
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah.
But I would make a motion to support the Oban Cemetery Society's funding request for $750, with 500 coming from District 4 and 250 coming from Regional.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to fund at $750, with $500 coming from District 4.
Funds and the remaining 250 coming from the regional funds. We have a motion and a seconder, Deputy Warden Sampson. Any discussion on that? Hearing none?
No. So, yeah, just to clarify for anyone watching at home, only because I've gotten grief for this in the past, but, so this is not regular annual maintenance, just if anybody is not aware, whatever, this is filling in where some things have sunk and so on, just because I think there was some practice many, many years ago, sometimes there was money just for mowing the lawn and so on and that, and just so everybody's clear, it's not for that. This is not something that's necessarily going to come up every year. So I'm fine with supporting it.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Clarification, Counselor Marshon?
Is there some cemetery fund that this group has? Like, normally cemetery churches say they have a little fund where people donate to it, so do they have any of that, or are they...
I don't, I don't know, but I would imagine that the regular maintenance would be something we haven't heard from, and so I would imagine this is sort of an over and above that. So this sounds to me like repair and not operations.
Hopefully, there's somebody to guess the maintenance.
Yeah.
I did speak with the applicant, John McDonald, a couple of weeks back, and it's definitely to do some kind of outstanding work, not regular kind of maintenance. I think as a community, they all pitch in and do the regular maintenance, is what they communicated to me, but this, there's some extra work that needs to go on so that it will be sustainable in the long term, so kind of a one-off deal here.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for $750 with 500 from District 4 and 250 from Regional Funds. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, are we on, we're on M. My goodness, look at us go.
I know.
Okay, so the Acadian Festival of Pettin de Grau has a request for $1,000. They have, looking for support for the Children's Parade, BBQ, and outdoor festivities, and Cherish Tradition, so there's some information on your package. The dollar amount is for $1,000. So I feel like an auctioneer, throwing it out there, minimum bid, and... Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, so I'll put a motion forward to take 750 out of the District 1 Fund and 250 out of the Regional Fund, and fund the entire $1,000. I'll second that.
Everybody's a seconder. So...
You like the bouncy castles?
You're all about the bouncy castles. Okay, so who did we put down?
We have Counselor Sean Sampson moved, seconder, Counselor Brian Marshon.
Okay, so Brian beat you to the bell this time. So the motion on the floor is for $750 to come from District 1 Funds and 250 from Regional Funds. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. N, which is the Isle of the Dam Historical Society. This is a Tier 2 application, so they have quite a lot of eligibility, but they are applying for $1,129, and for, on a total project which is $23,112. Okay, so I would be open to, I would be open to throwing $200 from District Funds, should anybody want to make a motion to, to this effect. Did you have something?
I have, I have...
Oh, you're already, I was, yeah, I was going to make the motion, 200 coming from District 2 Funds and the remainder from the regional funds, but if, I'll...
I think we'll go to this side of the table.
Okay, well, maybe nobody will second it, and then...
May sweeten the deal.
Yeah, so I was going to go 314.50 each and 500 from Regional, but you spent some money today, too, so I can go 429 from District 1, 200 from District 2, and 500 from Regional. For the whole, 1129. I'll second that.
Okay, so, okay, so the total amount, the total ask is for $1,129. We're looking at 429 from District 1, 200 from District 2, which brings that to 629, so the remainder is 500 from Regional Funds. And Deputy Warden has seconded that. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Oh, okay, Lakeside Community Association. So this is for an ask of $7,500. They are, are they in receipt? I believe they're in receipt of the $33,000, so $33,421. Does that sound right, Counselor Mumberkett, that that is, that they've sort of...
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
I think they lack information on it.
Okay, so I'll, that's the information there. It is a comfort center, they're looking for a considerable number of repairs, so I will throw it out, if somebody is open to...
I'll make a motion to support the Grand Lakeside Community Association grant application in the amount of $7,500, with 1,000 coming from District 4 and 6,500 coming from the regional budget.
I'll second that.
Is it aye, Deputy Warden Sampson? So this motion is for the full amount of 7,500, with 1,000 coming from District 4, 6,500 coming from Regional Funds. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Counselor Marshon, was that a yes?
No, it was a yea.
Good, okay. Okay, so at 7:20, we're on the last one. I was like, I'll see you like at 9:30 tonight, okay. Riverdale Community Services Society, so just to be clear, for those folks who may be new to this process, who are watching this, it is perfectly fine for groups to apply multiple times, so long as their total amount doesn't exceed limits in Tier 1 type and in Tier 2. So this is a Tier 2 type request, and this is for $7,250.39. This is for a grant to purchase the necessary equipment to maintain the ball fields. So they are looking for, to purchase the equipment, so this total amount, and it's looking like the contribution is for lawnmower, bush, and trimmer, so they're asking for the full dollar amount for this piece of equipment. So I'll throw that out there.
I'd like to speak to this group first. I'm not sure if the $500 quota is for the year or the week, maybe I'm just not understanding that.
Sure, and would we be, I think...
We're okay with that recently.
We don't even need to, yeah, I guess one of the things that I would really like to commit to is we do have a council meeting on the 24th of June, and the Director of Finance has said that there are some community groups just sort of finishing up, I think just a couple, but I'm perfectly happy to consider this one and the remaining at our council meeting on the 24th. I really do feel like community groups can't afford to miss the summer if there's work, plus quotes may or may not be honored, even three months from now, because it would be the end of September before we could really guarantee. So Counselor Marshon, I'm perfectly happy to move this to the June 24th meeting, and the Director of Finance will add to that agenda any that come in in time for us to consider those. Okay? Counsel, or Deputy Warden?
Should we make a motion to that effect, just to defer it to the June 24th meeting?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll second that.
Great, so motion...
To defer Item 4P, the Riverdale Community Services Society's application for $7,250.39. So there was a motion from Deputy Warden, seconded from, sorry, motion from Warden, sorry, from Marshon, Counselor Marshon, and Deputy Warden, seconded it by golly, all the wardens. Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? 10-4. Okay, seeing no further items on the agenda, I happily declare this meeting adjourned.
Awesome job.
Good job, look at that, 7:24. And, and just, we did, I think it's actually in policy, but regardless, we're going to need our finance staff to make sure they send us before every meeting an update, because y'all spent some money. So we'll, in time for our next meeting, we'll have an update that summarizes what you promised from, what we each promised from our district funds, and where we are with our regional funds.
Great.